Call to order the Schenectady City Council Committee meeting for Monday, March 20th, 2023. We have the first committee is Finance. Ms. Kimut Tiveran.
Thank you. I would like to call the Finance Committee to order. The first item is the 2023 Budget Amendment for IPS Position. Chief.
Okay. Yes.
Good afternoon.
Okay, so what I'd like to propose, currently we have three ladies in the office, our staff. Very busy office. And we ask them to do a lot. And we're asking more and more every week. So currently, we have one that is an IPS four, one person is a principal accountler, and the third is an informational statistical clerk. They all have different duties, and they are all compensated at different levels. What I've found in the office, the office works very well, ladies in the office work together, and they share a lot of the same responsibilities, even though that is not what their job titles are. In the last month and a half, maybe closer to two months, we've applied for two grants. We're going to be looking at a third grant. That is on one person. That's the person that is the information and statistics clerk. She's responsible for our grants. She's a new member to our team. But when that happens, especially now these two grants were came pretty close together, and it was all hands on deck. While she was doing that, other people were doing some of her duties. So the point is, they're all sharing in the duties. About a month ago, we had two members at the same time had to take some medical leave. They were up for two weeks. So all the running of the office fell on one particular person, and she was doing payroll, and she was doing everything. So it is very important that they're all trained at the same level. So it's my proposal that they will all be at the same level, brought the two that are not IPS four, they be brought up to that level. And it will have an impact of approximately $6,000 this budget. But we have money in the budget to pay for that. We're going to take the money that they put aside for Assistant Chief, which is not happening until at least till the exam has been corrected. We don't expect that to happen until maybe June with the year goes. So we are saving money from that, from that line. So it won't have a financial impact. And one other thing that's driving me to do this is our senior person in the office is going to be looking at retirement in the next two, three years. So it becomes very important to make sure the people that we have are going to be ready to take over those responsibilities.
Any questions, concerns?
No, just say that it seems like this is an effort to make a pretty efficient department even more efficient. I appreciate your dedication. We got to be on support.
Thank you. That's why you're saying that makes sense.
Yeah.
Then I take everything.
I try not to make that in public.
Well done. Thank you.
Any comments?
I'm not.
All in favor? All right. Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief.
The next item is the presentation of the 2023-2024 proposed hot annual plan, and call for a public hearing. Ms. Diaz.
Are you ready? We do have a presentation that ends up pulling up. It's not absolutely necessary. It's just going to reflect some of the things that I'm going to talk about here. So we put together, we put an RFP out late January. We got proposals back for our annual HUD funding, which is the Community Development Block Grant, the Emergency Solutions Grant, and the Homes Initiatives Program. So there's three different pots of money that we each year get requests for proposals for and put together a budget based on our goals and our five-year consolidated plan. So the annual action plan outlines the proposed allocations for these activities, and it's for the federal fiscal year of 2023 to 2024. So with that being said, we don't have our final allocation yet from HUD. It's always around the same. It's based on a formula. We have our deadline on May 15th to submit our plan to HUD, so we want to make sure we do that, although we don't know the final numbers. You might remember from last year, things changed slightly. We tried to round down this time just to make sure that, hopefully make sure that there isn't a decrease like we had last year with the CDVG fund. So the allocations and the use of the funds are based on the national objectives. It's to benefit low and moderate income persons, to aid in the prevention or elimination of slums or blight, or to meet community development needs having a particular urgency. So all of our funding has to meet those three categories. And then we have three goals that are outlined in our consolidated plan, with the overall outcome of the city of Schenectady's neighborhoods thriving vibrant communities where residents and businesses are afforded viable opportunities to improve their quality of life. So the three main goals in our consolidated plan, which you're probably maybe familiar with, but just to highlight the expanding housing opportunities, which is the first priority, the expanding of economic and workforce development priorities as the second, and the third is the strengthening of local neighborhoods. So all of the projects that we fund relate to these three goals and meeting the outcomes that were identified in the consolidated plan. The anticipated available funding for this year for the Community Development Block Grant is around $2 million. For the Emergency Solutions Grant, $190,000. And for the Home Investment Partnerships is 1.15 million. And with the Home Investment Partnerships, that's in our consortium. So we work with the City of Troy and the Town of Colony, and we basically split that allocation between our three communities for the overall outcomes. So I will go through line by line in what's in the current proposed budget. We do have a 30-day public comment period that begins tomorrow, and it'll run through April 21st. We also have a scheduled public hearing for the general city council meeting on Monday, April 10th. So there's time to submit comments on this plan and to have time to review it further. Let us know any questions. If you have questions about certain projects, definitely let us know. We, oh, you can back up, sorry, for a second. I just wanted to outline that in the public service category, this is the area where we're always, we always struggle because we have a public service cap. We can only use 15% of the annual allocation of CDVG funds for what are called public services, and this is what we get most of our applications for. So it always becomes a struggle of how to incorporate applications in the plan and still stay under that 15% cap. So you can see some of the projects outlined. It includes, some of the bigger ones are like the Boys and Girls Club of Schenectady, who fund recreation in the parks, in addition to the Youth Coalition, which is a collaborative of around 16 organizations, 12 to 16, depending on who's participating. But they have kind of collaborated to put in one application that's more of a coordinated effort. So we've seen success with that over the last couple of years, and we have proposed to fund this again in addition to the other items that are outlined there. And this is just showing the public service exemptions from organizations that are operating within our neighborhood revitalization strategy area. Thank you, Paul. And then this is the Public Works outlining that, and then our administration funds that go towards the operation and monitoring of all these programs. So as I mentioned, we have a 30-day public comment period, which starts tomorrow, goes for a month. You can submit written comments to the email outlined, and then also the public hearing will be on April 10th in room 209 at 7:00 p.m. And is there any immediate questions? I could, I will say, there are a couple new programs that we have in the budget, which I was going to just highlight quickly because we haven't funded them before. One of them is from Wildwood. It's an application from Wildwood. They have a home for five individuals that have developmental disabilities. And this, this application is really to just do some capital improvements on their building so that they can, you know, they can ensure that the residency is up to code and everything is taken care of. I think that was the main new one. The other new application that we propose funding for is for the Hindu Temple youth programming. So this is related to the renovation that's happening for the Gaians Community Center, and they're requesting some CDVG funds to expand programming at this center, which I think is currently under construction. However, they did indicate that they'd be able to use their existing facility, which is the temple, I believe, Dan, correct, to start some of this before their, the community center opens. So those are the main highlights. Those were the main two that were, the organizations we had not funded before.
Any questions, comments? So we'll need a motion to call for public hearing.
A moment, a second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. The next item is authorize, authorization for the mayor to enter an agreement with the Schenectady inner-city ministry. Ms. Diaz.
Yeah, so this is in relation to the next two requests, the first for Sycam, the second for Schenectady Foundation. This is after discussion around the $950,000 that was allocated for ARPA funding for the overall Food Council initiative. So this first resolution is, is basically relating to Sycam's request that was part of that overall strategy, and it's allocating $350,000 of the funding to Sycam to carry out the goals that they've identified in their application. I believe they included a couple of updates in the memo that they provided. And it is in collaboration with the Food Council. We have Bob Coro here from the Schenectady Foundation to discuss some of the goals and outlook of that, of that initiative moving forward. But yes, this request is specifically for the 350 of the ARPA funding to Schenectady inner-city ministries.
Any questions, comments?
Yes, please, please. If you'd like to come up, Amari, and just say a couple words, or if anybody has specific questions, we have, I'm sorry, I didn't even, with your mask, I didn't.
I just, I just walked in. Just to highlight that, I didn't. Thank you. Just to highlight what I hope you read on the, on the memo, we have continued some of the work that we have at the proposed, and the funding would go along with to sustain it for three years. As you know, for many nonparticular organizations, the challenge is funding to get the appropriate staff and the appropriate resources to get it going. Three years of funding, which is what we are proposing, $350,000 would get us a significant amount of time to get the project ongoing, but also work on the long-term sustainability of the project. What I also want to highlight, I see that some of you might have black and white copies of the, of the proposal. There have been several updates to, to the work. And then not only that, we're already working in 14 locations in eight of the city neighborhoods, which is an increase from six of the regional proposed neighborhoods into eight of the neighborhoods. The Community Composting Program, which was a significant part of the original plan, we have partnered, and we are currently working on our Fair Avenue Farm, which owned by, by the city, in creating a smaller scale but sustainable and, and movable composting at the project with the Swallow Water Organization in the county. Already working on, on that is far more, it is sustainable. It will get community impact in the kind of compostable work that we want to work through. So that's ongoing, and we have been able to do that outside of this, of this project. And of course, again, we have included Union Street and the Stockade in the communities that we are impacting. So, you know, we thank you for the consideration of this work and look forward to the ongoing work that we're trying to do around food access and partnering with City Hall in this work. Thank you.
Any questions, comments on the side?
I just want to comment that being familiar with the work that organizations are doing, and I'm really impressed with the ability that you guys have been able to scale, really kind of doing more with less. So I think that, you know, anytime we have opportunity to support that very important work, we should do so. It's why I do that support.
Go ahead, please.
And I will add that, I think adding the two neighborhoods of Union Street and Stockade, I appreciate that. And I, you know, the farm-to-school curriculum development project that the school district is doing, supporting that in this way, I think is, is very important. And then also the fact that you're collaborating with the YW on the other, on the other project as well. I appreciate those, those partnerships.
Thank you. Any other comment? Go ahead, please.
I have a quick question. Apologize if I'm speaking out of turn. The monies need to be allocated by 2024 and spent by 2026. Were there any issues with the end three years or not? Or am I incorrect?
But yes, yes, the money will have to be spent by the end of 2026, and our contract will reflect that.
And we'll work the numbers to make sure that that happens. Yeah, for sure. Absolutely.
Any comments? Same number? We have a motion. Second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is authorization for the mayor to enter an agreement with the Schenectady Foundation utilizing ARPA's funding. Ms. Diaz.
So this is in connection to the last request. This is the $600,000 that is proposed to go to the Schenectady Foundation, which would be in direct support of the Food Council. You may have gotten a memo I sent around earlier. It was just confirming the amount from SUNY Schenectady in their needs for the food-related items that would also be part of this. And I would like to invite Bob up to just talk a little bit about the next steps for the council and how the funding will be due to us.
Great. Thank you. Bob Coro of the Schenectady Foundation. Want to thank my colleague, Amari, for all the work that Sycam is doing. And, you know, this is a very collaborative community, and that is one of the reasons why we think we can do work differently here than many other cities, many other communities. And given that we're seeing this widespread issues, particularly visible since COVID of food insecurity, we can respond in an emergency manner, and we have been. We also believe that there's a way to kind of take it up a notch and be more thoughtful and thinking of the long term as to how do we fix the system? How do we fix the system? And that takes everyone sitting in the room together to discuss. And when I say who that all is, we've already started forming the council. We've, we've had two meetings. It's still in its formative stages, so it's not a full council yet, but we've been outlining the issues we're going to start on. One is equity and access is at the top of the list for this year to take a look at. The other one is just looking more broadly at the food system, which involves farmers, distributors, providers, retailers. They are all part of this system too. And then the third area we're looking at is in communication, public information, getting the public to understand and be more aware of what the real issues are, why we have this, these issues, and engaging residents in telling the story. And that's one of the most significant pieces of this. We do believe and we do buy into the idea of creating this Food Council, understanding that the solutions are usually with the people who are closest to the problem. And so we will have residents at the table. We will do, one of the first things we're doing is organizing outreach and focus groups, sitting down with residents in neighborhood association meetings, and listening to their stories about what are their, what, why do they think that their neighborhood has problems accessing healthy food? So we have, we've started this. When we receive ARPA funding, if we're so blessed to, then this just gives us an injection to be able to hire somebody on a part-time basis who's on this every day, right? Who's on this issue so that it's not drifting from meeting to meeting to meeting. And no, we have to get on this, and we have to put a priority. I should also say that this, since we put this together, this plan has been augmented by Schenectady County Public Health Services and Cornell Cooperative Extension, which are providing a graduate-level fellow who will be with us nearly full-time to do the research and pull the partners together. So we will have a whole team for the next several years working on food security, trying to make every resident of this city food secure. to make every resident of this city food secure. And we welcome the city's role, place at the table in that process as well. So that's just kind of an update on where we are now.
Any questions, comments? Go ahead, please.
I appreciate that we're having this conversation because I think it would have been, you know, I mean, we talked about this a long time ago and being able to have our two speakers here and you to kind of give us an overall picture of this, I think is very helpful. And I know that I had a brief conversation with Mr. Coro about it back when we first started talking about the project. But I, I'm glad that we're having it now. I wish we had had it back then. I think that, I appreciate very much this long-term plan. I, I think that that chance for the council, the Food Council, to be looking at the systemic, you know, underlying causes of food insecurity is just so important because I think, you know, Ms. D'Toros and my experience just doing this one-month food drive that we did, we certainly gained a lot of knowledge by being in touch with so many different food pantries. And those, I think the group of people that came together as volunteers during that process really felt strongly that there is this opportunity to be able to end food insecurity in Schenectady and we would like to see that happen. So I'm, you know, really supportive of this project and can't wait to see all the outcomes.
Any other?
Well, I just want to, well, thank you for bringing it forward. I want to thank Mr. Coro. I appreciate the fact that you're bringing people that are impacted by this to the table because I think that, I know for a fact that that's most important when we're doing the work, that we're not just doing it from a top-down approach, but people who are impacted can bring things and give ideas that we probably would have never thought of. So appreciate the inclusiveness of that.
Yeah. And then just to highlight again, the, I think 450,000 of the requested 600 goes directly, will go directly towards, you know, actually implementing the things that come out of the Food Council. So that's, you know, it's identifying the issues and then it's also having some researchers to implement changes directly.
So I just want to amplify the fact that you are focusing again on equity and access. I think that's so important. Often people kind of just say that but don't do that. So to have that embedded in a priority is really important. So I want to just kind of highlight that and I hope other people that are watching and see this because that kind of leads into the next one. We're talking about telling that story, you know, being witnessing what the city and the county did during the pandemic, you know, kind of really removing some red tape. But collaborating with people was probably some of the best work I've ever seen in, in coming out of our city and our county. So I think now collecting that data almost can create a, you know, kind of, this is a best practice for other municipalities to, to see what we're doing here. So I think that that's also really important. So I just want to say, I really appreciate the equity on lens that you're using and actually doing what you're saying and, and recording that information. So thank you for that.
Any other comments?
And just similar with this contract, who just make sure that the contract ended within time. Yes, correct. Okay. Thank you.
I just have one final, because I want, I think it's important for the public to understand as well that the Schenectady Foundation is also putting in a big chunk of money, 1.5 million dollars into this initiative. So it's not just that the city is supporting this, but there's money from the foundation, other foundations, as well as other private donations that are going into this effort. So I appreciate that as well.
Any other comments? Seena may have a motion. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. The next item is authorization for the mayor to enter an agreement with the Schenectady Hindu Temple and Community Services. Mr. E.
So this is really just a correction. We had a resolution that authorized the mayor to enter an agreement with the Schenectady Guyanese Community Center for $50,000 to convert 1218-6A into a community center. It has been determined that the Guyanese Community Center is not yet a 501(c)(3), so we can't enter an agreement with, with that specific entity under that title. However, the building is currently owned by the Schenectady Hindu Temple and Community Services. And we are just requesting the authorization for the mayor to enter an agreement with the Schenectady Hindu Temple and Community Services for the $50,000 to implement the, the changes for the community center. So it's just really a name. We couldn't enter the agreement under that name. We needed to use the name that had an active 501(c)(3).
Questions, comments? Seena may have a motion? Second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. E. The next item is 2023 negative declaration seeker for capital project, Mr. Ferrari. Been a while.
Yeah.
How was your vacation?
Thank you. By the President, City Council. We heard tonight, actually the next three resolutions that are all around deal with bonding and banning of the funds of the capital projects. The first one we want to talk about is the negative declaration because the city is the lead agency. And, you know, we're about to borrow 12, 12.6 million dollars and it's been determined with the issuance of these bonds that there will not be a significant or adverse effect on the environment. So this is something that we'd like to have the city council sign as lead agencies. I gave all the paperwork for you to read through. Is there anything missing?
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you. I'm going to just skip over the permanent bonding one and go to the next one because it actually deals with the 2023 capital projects, which we just did the negative declaration on. As you recall, this is, the city's script had already passed in the 2023 budget to capital, capital projects. And it is determined through that that we need to borrow 12.4 million dollars and change. But as we go through the borrowing process, there's a cost of issuance of 168,000. So total amount that we need to be borrowing was 12,639,841 dollars. Like you said, this is, has already been approved of the capital projects during the budget process. We've been working with our fiscal advisors and, and our bond council and we're determining that this ban for the first year is going to be issued around 3.5 to 3.65%. We're trying to rush it before things get even worse with the banks. We think we'll be able to handle this right now. So that's, that's what we're shooting for.
Questions, comments? May I have a motion?
I'll move it.
All in favor?
Aye. The third one, the third one is to, what we're trying to do here is that, as you recall, the 2022, we borrowed the capital project money. We used the bond anticipation note. And what we want to do for 2023 is to actually make this note, make it a permanent financing for the next 21 years. Again, with our fiscal advisors and our bond councils, we determined that we want to permanently borrow the amount, which I think was in the back of the, of this legislation, 6,985,778. We're anticipating between 3.75 and 4% and that's, that's why we're, we're like a month ahead here trying to get it over because of the banking situations.
Any questions, comments? May I have a motion?
I'll move it.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
So I'd like to call this order to call the safety committee. We have one item on the agenda tonight. It's going to be a call for a public hearing for school bus stop arms, safety camera, local law. I'll be presented by Ms. Porter.
Good evening. So a few weeks ago, we had people come in and explain about the, our school bus camera and how much to it, first of all, it would create revenue. They already went to the school district to make sure that the school district had buy-in on this particular project and the school district did have buy-in. But in order for us to do it, first of all, there has to be a local law created. In order to do the local law, we have to have the public hearing to do that. So this right now is to, just to call for that public hearing.
Any questions or comments?
I'll move it.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Any other items to call for the public safety committee?
I'll leave them.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Cross order city development and planning. We have eight items on the agenda. The first is to authorize issuance of revocable permit number 675 to La Boyas Italian Deli. Mr. Wallen is?
We'll be right on it there.
Oh, okay. All right. While we're waiting for him, we are going to skip to item number four, which is asking for a ceremony, ceremony resolution to honor a vet. Most of us may remember Jim Wilson, who passed away. And this Saturday, they are going to be actually honoring him. So our resolution will come. Because the information came so late, we will not get this in time. But just want to still do a resolution honoring him. Any questions?
Second?
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Wallen. We're waiting for you.
Thank you.
Besides not have to waste time and pass something?
No, I'm sorry. I forgot my paperwork.
Oh, okay.
Okay. First one?
Yes, number one.
All right. The revocable permit. This is La Joyas Van Brinken, their reopening. It used to be La Joya, now it's La Joyas. And they need a new sign, new insurance. They have submitted it. The sign is essentially the same sign, other than the apostrophe, on the same mount. So I don't see any issue.
I'll move it.
Second?
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Item number two, revise green fees and rates at Schenectady musical outlets.
Yep. So every year, we come to you with green fees for the coming year. Season is hopefully going to open in April, depending on what the weather does for going forward. This year, we are getting a new fleet of electric vehicles. As we're getting a new fleet, we thought it was a good time to increase our fees for carts as we usually have a little bit of a strategy where we try not to do increases every year. We try to be strategic with what we do. So we held off doing any kind of increases because our fleet was at the end of its service life. Now this is a brand-new fleet. It's actually rode premium carts with the lithium. They're going to have a new GPS system in them. The charging cables are back and all of that. And it is, you know, cost to city, the golf course, really money to make those improvements. So we're recommending a $1 increase for nine and a $2 increase for 18 holes. And we're still within, you know, regional competitiveness with that rate. The change is on the back with an error from last year. For the Assistant Pro, it was the same rate as the Pro, but we actually charge, the city makes a little less off of that because the Pro actually makes a little less. So that was a correction that Matt asked. I made, he apologizes for not being here. He had a personal issue.
And so there's just really, I said, I personally saw it, I thought, wow, there's going to be a lot of changes.
No, I tried to, I tried to highlight, and then this is also with the resolution. So these are the rates for next year. So I try to make sure that every year we have a good track record of what the rates are for this year.
So it's really just amounts to, for changes that are being made. So if you have an option to look for, look at it and change the motion.
Second?
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And item number three, to authorize the mayor to enter into supplemental agreement number two in the state department of transportation for Broadway Mill and Phil Ford Street.
Yep. So the Broadway project is in a similar state to the PSAT project, which is the project around City Hall. We are substantially complete with the project, but as you'll see, the signals are not 100% complete. There's some components that are not done. This is caused by supply chain shortages. The supply chain shortages have led to longer inspection costs, often times. So we have that in here as well as there were some quantity differences where we actually put a little bit more paving down. We altered some drainage structures. We did some CTV inspection and cleaning. And we reached out to the DOT, sent them a letter about this. And they agreed to reimburse the city as part of the project costs for 95%, 80% federal, 50% state. And to do that, we have to have a supplemental agreement with them to change the amounts both for them. And then we changed them with finance once we have the resolution. So really no negative business. Over $200,000 of, of aid to go towards the Broadway.
And the city's, city's portion is?
The city's portion, I don't have the right for this, right? The city's portion of the, the, it's, it's, it's 5% of 250,000. So roughly, yeah, 16,000. So we're saying, yeah, just to make sure. So.
Six?
Sixty.
Five percent?
Yeah.
Of 250? It's going to be, what, 7,500? No, excuse me. No, I take it back to 1250.
1250, yeah. It's 10%, we're at 25. Yeah. So that's, that's our share of the 5%. So we've been, I've come to the, you know, we've done this quite a bit with other projects.
Just want to make sure we've talked.
Yep.
Any questions?
No.
Second?
Alls in favor?
Aye.
My apologies for being late.
Thank you, Mr. Wallen. Item number five, ceremony resolutions for Saint Adelbert's 120th anniversary. Mr. Paul Me.
Saint Adelbert is celebrating their 120th anniversary and having a big celebration. So thought it'd be appropriate to recognize him.
I'll have, change the motion?
Second?
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And a ceremony resolution for Holi Pavla post-celebration. Mr. Lucio Varan?
Yep. Thank you. I'm requesting a resolution to join the Hindu community and celebrate in fact, post-five celebration. It was scheduled for March 11. They had to postpone it and it's now April 1st at the Schenectady Hindu Temple. So I'm requesting a resolution.
April 1st.
To celebrate April 1st, 1:00 p.m.
Now, any questions? Change the motion? I'll move it.
Second?
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Item number seven, creative outdoor garbage collection bins. Mr. Paul Me.
Yes, this is about the garbage cans to put around the city with creative outdoor. Again, they will supply bins that have ads on them. Certain percentage of that comes to the city anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000 in annual revenue. You get a recycling bin as well as a garbage bin. And asking that the mayor be allowed, be authorize this for the mayor to go into negotiations with Creative Outdoor.
Questions, comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Miter.
The last time we discussed this, I think we were held up because we were asking mayor, so allow the mayor to meet with the union representative to discuss some concerns they had about who's going to pick up the garbage and things like that. The mayor is not here, so I'm not sure who has that information. And the meeting was held and those concerned were impressed.
Mr. Colton's raising his hand.
I can speak to that. The mayor did meet with Local 1037, was present. Mr. LaFond was present. Members of the union and their distanciation were present. They didn't raise any significant concerns related to the pickup of garbage. They recognized that they already pick up garbage from the city trashcans at certain corners and they realized that's within the scope of their work.
Okay. Well, they were concerned about this company picking up the garbage.
This company is not going to be picking up the garbage. It's always been proposed when that gentleman had come in to speak about it. That question came up. And I think at the all indications, and this would be part of the contract, would be that city employees will be picking up the garbage.
Thank you.
And certainly the city council in authorizing a resolution can create that limit on the authorization, you know, including terms like they do with other, with the council does with other things, saying, you know, with the condition that city employees, you know, collect the waste.
Thank you.
Mr. Paul?
Yeah, I just want to, again, express support for this program. It sounds like a really good program. I think that there's been a lot of efforts from our city government as well as our residents to reduce litter. So I think this is a great way to do that. I would, I guess the only thing I'd like to share is I think that, you know, is there a way to do this without replacing the garbage cans that we have right now? I just think that that should, we should just, I think we should go ahead and move forward and full support it. I just think that we should replace the existing ones. I think we should just add these canisters here. So therefore, you know, it's just easier way and we're able to reduce litter. I don't, I don't know if we want to like roll back any of the work that's already been done. I think that we should add onto the, build on to the progress from our point. I don't know if you have those on there.
It's fine, buddy.
Yeah.
Yeah. Go ahead.
No, I was going to say, I mean, I, we need a lot of garbage cans. So I think that as long as the, you know, I, I recognize that Mr. LaFond and, and his office, I mean, if there's garbage cans that need to be replaced because they're damaged or in bad shape. But basically if we're adding to the if we're adding to the, without having to spend any money on them, I think it's a really smart idea. And certainly, we hear over and over and over and over that this is a huge issue, so, you know, the more, the more garbage cans, the better, and especially since we're not having to outlay any resources.
Mr. Van Veren?
No, no.
Yeah.
So in addition to adding what's out there, right, I do know in the north side, they had some new cans last year, and so wherever, they're going to leave those cans along, but there are a lot of cans in the city that do need replacing, and this will be recycling alongside of trash. So, you know, I always look for a recycle bin, and I can't find anyone, you know, not too many in the city. So this will just be a good, good situation.
All right. So I think just because, the problem about the trashcans, because in the, in the LR, it says replace old trashcans. So just wanted, yeah, just to make sure that we are not replaced, because people, there was a project that went on, and several neighborhoods said, you know, we need trashcans. So ideally, as I understand this, they will be in high visible areas anyway, so the other trashcans that are there can maybe move further into the neighborhood. I would also recommend that we contact, be in contact with the groups that already give the trashcans that are currently there as we do this, and maybe when, as we have to reposition some of those older trashcans. And Bob Caro could probably tell us who to get in touch with, because they, the Schenectady Foundation was the ones that actually funded all of those projects, so they would know who the contact people are. But just, and a lot of those trashcans are in really great shape, and we paid a lot of money. They, the Schenectady Foundation paid a lot of money for that. So keeping, with keeping those and not getting rid of them, I think is hugely important here. I did have an opportunity to review the presentation once again, so just want to clear, the recycling, is that only to be on municipal property? That's what the presentation said.
Right.
So...
They're all, it's one unit.
It's just one big?
Yeah.
And we can choose all recycling or trash to recycling, whatever we decide.
Yeah, ideally, I think you would want one of each, so.
And I think, I know in the last meeting you said that the, in terms of placement, they would contact, they would be in touch with the city council in terms of where the placement...
The mayor and then the city council can certainly have their input as well.
And again, I would recommend that we have inputs in the neighborhoods who've already, you know, are invested in this process and have invested in this process, so we don't exclude and move things around without the people in the neighborhood. So I think that's important as well.
I think that we really, I think it's not necessarily high visibility areas, I think it's high traffic areas and high areas where there's, I think we've identified and can identify areas where there is a lot of litter. I, I think that these are going to probably mostly end up on those corridors where we have business activity, like State Street and Eastern and Broadway and Van Brankin. I mean, I think those are probably going to be the areas where we'd be looking, because of the advertising component, I would think.
Yes.
If I was trying to get to the advertisers, I would probably look to the businesses that are going to be surrounding the areas where these garbage cans might be placed. So, yeah, so I think there's certainly, I think that, again, the email that we got from the resident that outlined those very heavily littered areas is going to be really, and of course, our oxygen services is going to know immediately where that volume of litter and trash is.
So I, I think they did say high visibility as well, they really want, because people want their businesses seen, so, which makes sense. So, you know, we have the issue regarding the, whether there was concern from the union addressed, and making sure that the neighborhoods have their, you know, have an input into, you know, where the other cans go, that we don't throw the old cans. I, you know, those are the concerns that we want to make sure that we address as we move forward with this. Is there anything else that I didn't?
Couple of them.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item will be an executive session, so I ask for a motion to recess.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're recessed.
Okay. Just recessed, yeah.
We're recessed.
I would like to call Board of Government Operations. We have three items on the agenda. The first is a memorandum of agreement between the city and Local 1037A, and that's Andrew Colton.
I recommend that these three items in Undergovernment Operations go into executive session pursuant to Section 105.1E of Public Officers' Laws that relates to collective negotiations.
Or to recess.
Second.
Was in favor?
Aye.
Executive session first and then recess.
Or government operation, right, to executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are in executive session.
Nope, I think I have to, I have to, I'd like to open claims.
We have one item on the claims agenda, and that item also would be something that we'd
need to go into executive session for, so I'll look for a motion to go into, well, I guess, do I recess my committee too, or just go into executive session?
Go into executive session first and then recess.
Yeah.
Motion to...
Actually, no, just go into executive session, and just open this in executive session, and then we can go back to the other...
Right. Okay. All right, great. So...
All in favor?
Okay.
So now we're in executive session.
Yes. Oh, one member of the public.